Let's call the meeting to order. If everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. Which stands. And just for all. Thank you, everybody. I know it's unusual to have two of us remote and two of us and I they are in the meeting and then I think Mike Gardner had a conflict. But this is a this is a I think it's a testament to the town because at an event that for new select board members that Elena and I attended. Throughout the state, there are an awful lot of cities and towns that have not gotten organized enough to do what we do, never mind record all. You know, meetings and boards and I want to really point out Lonnie Tinio's company, Worldband, has done an awful lot for us. To to get all of this technology running right most of the time. But are there any citizen statement or petitions that anybody would like to make before we go into the rest of the agenda?
Sorry, Mike, do we need to do roll call since we're hybrid?
It's I think we're being recorded.
Okay.
Yeah, we are. So I don't think it's I don't think it's necessary, but but Laura will keep us honest if if we need to do that. So. So let's move on to item three in the agenda corresponds to the board senior citizen day and senior of the year Kevin Rudden. It is Amy, I see you there. Would you like to say a few words before we make this motion?
First of all, I would like to thank the Selectmen, Lonnie for showing up on Sunday and presenting the award book. On behalf of all the seniors, we appreciate having the acknowledgement. You know, it makes the seniors feel valued and they appreciated it and it was a wonderful ceremony and they all did a great job. And I think everybody enjoyed themselves. So we do appreciate that. We're glad to see you.
My pleasure. All right, would with one of you gentlemen there in the room like to like to make the motion?
Sure. I move to proclaim Sunday, September 18th, 2022 as Senior Citizens Day and to proclaim Kevin Rudden as Senior Citizen of the Year. Whereas the town of Mendon is truly blessed with the senior citizens who get have given of their time and talents to make the town of Mendon a better place to live in. Whereas those elder citizens of Mendon represent a wealth of knowledge and understanding. And whereas those elder statesmen have offered themselves freely and without compensation and attempt to improve their community. And whereas throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, citizens are gathering to express their thanks to seniors of the Commonwealth and to reaffirm the commitment of the Commonwealth. And to safeguard the independence and dignity of our elders. Now therefore, we the Select Board of the Town of Mendon do hereby proclaim Sunday, the 18th day of September, the year 20,022, as Senior Citizens Day in Mendon, Massachusetts. And urge all citizens to express their appreciation and respect to those who have served this town so well throughout their lives. Now read the proclamation, Kevin Rudden. Whereas Kevin has lived in Mendon for the past 38 years and maintains that Mendon is a wonderful place where I choose to live my adult life and raise my three children. Michael, who lives with his wife Francesca in Raleigh, North Carolina, plus Timothy and my daughter Maya, who both live with me in Mendon. Also attended the Mendon Upton School System and Blackstone Valley Technical School. Kevin has served continuously in appointed positions and on elected town boards. Among them are the Board of Selectmen, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Board, Town Moderator, and the Council on Aging. He currently serves in two elected positions on the Mendon Board of Assessors and the Water Commission and an appointed position as the Mendon ADA Coordinator. Kevin, for roughly 20 years, was an active leader in the Mendons Cub Scout PAC One, Troop One Boy Scouts and Troop 44 Boy Scouts. And the Local Scout District and the Local Scout Council. One of his proudest accomplishments is personally coaching more than 25 young men to the rank of Eagle Scout. Kevin was previously a full-time and part-time reporter in Rhode Island and Massachusetts for 45 years. Kevin was honored by two Milford civic groups for his work as a reporter for the Milford Town Crier Newspaper. Kevin is now in his third career, serving as the Principal Assessor in the Town of Holliston, Chair of the Massachusetts Assessing Officers Association Legislative Committee. And Editor of the Northeast Regional Association of Assessing Officers Newsletter. Kevin is a member of the Menham Brothers Brothers, sorry, Menham Brush Association, otherwise known as the Brothers of the Brush. And has served as co-chair as the town's 350th anniversary celebration. Kevin enjoys giving back to the community and hopes to continue doing so until he decides to retire. Now therefore, we the Mendon Board Select Board do hereby proclaim Kevin Rudden as Senior Citizen of the Year, given this 18th day of September in the year 20,022 in Mendon, Massachusetts.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Amy, do you have some information about the upcoming fall programs?
Sorry, I didn't have it ready in time to. Peggy Gare is the co-chair of the Council on Aging. So a lot of things are happening at the center. When things started to open up, we started to open up slowly, but we were things are definitely underway. Fuel assistance has started as of August. For folks that have been on fuel assistance before, we do the applications at the Council on Aging. And new new applicants will be encouraged to get their information to us later this fall. Veterans benefit programs are coming up. We have one next week for veterans that veterans, widows, spouses. They would like to know what they're entitled to. That'll be Thursday, September 29th at 1:30 at the Senior Center. We are working towards the Veterans Annual Appreciation Program, which we have not held for three years. This will be the first year. It's something that's cosponsored by the Police Association. We're very grateful for them to help us with that. And that will be this year will be actually on Veterans Day, November 11th. We're starting our first evening program, Evening Yoga, this fall on October 4th and Tuesday. It's limited space. Folks can contact the center to find out if there's availability. There will be two flu shot clinics coming up, sponsored by the Board of Health and the VNA. Hosted one will be hosted at the Senior Center on Friday, October 7th from 10 a.m. to 12 p.m. And that's for anybody. That's not just seniors. Sometimes we've had we've had families come where they want to get everybody done in one fell swoop. So they'll pick take the kids out of school, come on up to the center and do that. They'll also be one at Misco Middle School on Tuesday, October 19th between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m. The fall is a time for seniors to consider their healthcare options and we have health insurance counseling available year round. But we really have a push on it come October, from October 15th through December 7th. Seniors have that period to review what they've had for insurance in the past, especially for their prescription coverage. And they can make changes which will go into effect January 1st. We have several programs coming up. The people can go on to our website, call us at the center, get our newsletter. You know, different programs where they can come and find out what their options are. Tax aid applications, which we're we're promoting are due to the Treasurer's Office on October 31st. Folks that are having trouble paying their taxes can contact the Treasurer's Office. They can contact the Senior Center, the Assessor's Office and find out, you know, what they need to do to find out if they're eligible for that.
And it's all confidential.
Everything we do is confident. Everything we do is confidential. Scouting for food drive, we work in conjunction with the scouts for that. Of course, we host the food pantry for the whole town, not just seniors, for the whole town. And I've been in touch with Phil Black, who will be co-leading that effort. And so we will work with them. I will tell you, our biggest issue right now, not just us, all of us, is how do we advertise this? And I know Lonnie, you advertise the the Rock the Block program through the mail, which is which can be costly. So we're trying to figure out, how do we get the word out? And I know people say social media, not everybody's on social media. And I do say, I know the Rock the Block flyer made a big impression. There were people that were very upset because they didn't get theirs in the mail. And I think more had to be mailed out or something to that effect.
We did have to drop some more off and as well, I forgot to check off the P O box section. So if you have a P O box, you can.
Right. So so right now we're looking at it, is it worth investing that much money? Because it is it is costly. It's not as much as the insert for the crier.
But you have to pay for your printing too, though. So so if you can get the printing done donated, I ended up, we were running out of time, so it ended up being.
Do you know? That's a good point.
Somebody can print it for you, which I believe there's.
BBT?
Well, no, even the Friends of Mendon elders might be willing to do that.
And it is it is an issue because even the town crier, at least right now, and it may never be an option anymore. Because there was an article that that the town crier is not going to be published. There's both the Mendon Upton versions and the Milford version right now. That was that was on social media about a week ago.
That's social media. I have heard on good authority that there is somebody that does want to buy it. It's a matter of negotiating. And if it does come to fruition, it wouldn't be back on track till the spring. I'm hoping for that. It's the best publication.
Yeah, well, there are a lot of and there are a lot of organizations that use it as a way to get the word out about different things. So we need to come up with alternatives.
Yeah, so we have a very specific food items that we really need on a regular basis. And we do try to earmark that on the flyer that we've done before and with great success.
With great success, but we also any cash donations that come in, cash donations that come in, we have volunteers that do our shopping and can get exactly what what our families need. So that's good. The other thing, though, that the flyer is good for, it helps families that and people, not just families, but people that are in need. It lets them know that this is available to them. It says right on there, it says, if you know someone who could use the service. And it also references fuel assistance on there. So it's a it's a public service announcement too. So for that reason, I would like to see it go out in the mail, but I didn't even think of the sponsorship. That was that's yeah, we can discuss that on our end. What's that?
I might know some people that would.
Okay, all right. Wonderful. Thank you. Just I just wanted to make the Select Board aware that we have a lot of collaborations. And as you know, I typed this up pretty quickly between yesterday and today. And as I'm doing so, I said, oh, the scouts, I don't have the scouts on there. Scouts are wonderful to work with. They really are. A lot of them over the years have used our facility for their meetings and whatnot, which is really nice because then we can we can certainly, you know, trade information and collaborate. We work with the Board of Health, the local VNA, the TAF Public Library, the Mendon Fire Department. Does a lot of education for our seniors, trying to help prevent prevent fires. And they have educational programs which we and we coordinate so that they the clients that need them can confidentially have their services be met. But again, it's not something that everybody needs to know that's and then and it's great for the fire department because they might become aware of a senior that needs our assistance in other ways. We might tell them that, hey, they need their smoke detectors changed. But they might go into someone's home and say, hey, you know, they really need help with with other things. And we can make referrals for other services. Mendon Police Association do a lot of safety programs with us for us, for our seniors. And just want to let you know that our educational and nutritional programs are really starting to pick up again. We offer twice weekly lunches. The food pantry has since the pandemic has really been running strong. We have about 50 families and individuals that use it on a fairly regular basis. We haven't fully started to allow people to come back in again. We're discussing that. The board is discussing that for safety reasons. Right now, we still have volunteers packing boxes for people and they're either being delivered to them or they're coming to pick them up. So we've got the nutritional programs, educational programs, Senior Center. The Senior Veteran Work Program is something that we really need to address at some point. We currently have 11 participants and that's down from about 20 before the pandemic. We lost people not not because they moved, because they felt that they were no longer able to kind of meet the meet the program, not requirements, but to help out in a specific way. But currently, we only have 11 participants, but we also don't have a lot of work right now. You know, the building department will call periodically and say, I need help with this, that and the other thing. So just want to make you aware, it's a very valuable program. That got us through the pandemic. The people, the few people that were still able to stay on it really helped us out. And lastly, just wanted to let you know that our Senior Center van is providing transportation for seniors, disabled individuals. And it's picking up, takes people shopping, takes people to medical appointments, brings people to the center for lunch, for programs that they wouldn't be able to do otherwise. So.
And the more the more that we open up and have more people coming in, the more we realize how limited our space really is. I mean, we have the Friends of Mendon elders and they meet once a month from September to June. Our capacity for that room is 50. We have 93 paid members. They don't all attend naturally. What I'm saying is is that we we seem to be having more and more people needing our services coming in. And we're going to have a space problem. I.
Well, right now we are. Right now, we we're breaking down and putting up furniture every single day, almost daily between exercise and lunch. And today we had two evidence-based programs. One of them is for fall fall prevention program. And the second one is a memory program. So for the different requirements for different programs, we're breaking down, putting up, moving tables around and chairs. And because we're using the one one main room of the center. So.
We'll probably come back to you in a few months and ask if you would think about forming a committee to just look into the feasibility of of our expansion. Rumor has it, I don't know if Chief Kersey's here or not, but rumor is that Chief Kersey has expressed an interest. Is he hiding in the back?
No, 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 he volunteered himself. He volunteered himself.
All right, well, we would appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's we have a does Phil Sibley, is he here to to introduce himself?
Hi, I'm Phil Sibley. I live down at Seven Nelson Court, been in town for just under 40 years. After about 50 years.
Requirement yet, Phil?
Not yet. That's I think there's some people that need my help, so I want to. After about 50 years in the high tech field, successful years, I retired last year and I spent a year thinking about what I like to do, where I'd like to spend some time. One of the areas with the Senior Center, knowing some people who were involved before, and I can contribute some time there. I have some other areas. So I'd like to make myself available to the board as a board member to help them with all these wonderful programs they're trying to do. A lot of work to be done. And I think being involved with soccer, baseball, Cub Scouts, Boy Scouts in town. I have a lot of the program activities that I'm used to and I'd like to continue that now for the town itself.
Thank you for volunteering.
And I think it would be a one-year appointment. Is that correct, Amy? One year? To fill the vacancy.
Term that expires June 30th and then we're hoping people stay on.
With that, I appoint Phil Sibley to the Council on Aging for a term to expire May 30, 2023.
I'll second that.
Should say June 30th.
June 30th, sorry, you're right. June 30, 2023.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And again, thank you for volunteering. All right, the next Chief Kersey, you have somebody you'd like to introduce us to?
Good evening. Actually brought two officers with me, one's for appointment today. The other officer to my left, I'll go first, is Officer Thompson. You appointed him to the last meeting. I don't think in the past decade I've missed appointing anybody, but we had some stuff going on. So I wanted to make sure I brought him back in here and introduced him to the board. So it's Officer Joseph Thompson. I think you read about his bio from Attleboro PD. He's a veteran, has a lot of experience. Has been great so far to work with. So hopefully that keeps up. He he seems to really like Mendon a lot. I don't know if you have any questions or anything, because usually I open the board to any questions of Joe or anything like that.
I don't have any questions. No questions come to mind. How are you finding it so far? I like the community aspect of it. It's much different being in like a tight-knit community. It's nice.
It's different not having people throw stuff and yelling at them when it gets out of the car. So it's different not getting people people throwing stuff and yelling at them and then he gets out of the car. He doesn't know what to do when someone said hello. He kind of looked for a minute, but no.
That doesn't happen here.
So and to the right of me is Officer Torres Battalion. He's a local from Upton. Went through the Fitchburg Steak Program, really good program, got his four-year degree, will be working on his master's degree coming this fall or this winter.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah. So so the program, it's a nice transition program. What it is, they go four years for an education, they get a bachelor's degree. Then they get on the job. Well, then they go to the academy. So it makes them ready to be hired right out of the the schooling. And then from that they get credit because of the academy and their work experience. And I think the master's program now becomes like a year versus two years. So they they able to jump into a master's program a lot easier. It's a combination of experience and education. So good, good track road. We've hired people from that that system before and they've worked out well. So so I'm asking you to appoint Officer Battalion tonight and then we'll be back up to full staff. One position is replacing someone who went to Grafton a few months ago. And the other position is replacing the full-time position when Lieutenant Blanchett retired as a full-time employee. So they'll put us back up to staff now.
Yeah, I'm glad to have both of yous joining our force. I'm glad that you're you're joining. It's nice to have a local person that's from the area and you know, you grew up in Upton, but sure you hung around in these in these there parts as well. But you know, you come from a great family and I know your parents, your uncles, your your whole family. So I'm very happy to see that you're you're coming over here to Mendon with us. Thank you very much. Thank you both of yous.
Forgot to mention Officer Thompson's a Marine too, not a former Marine. So comes from has military experience and and served that country. So.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that.
So could someone make a motion?
Absolutely. I move to appoint Torres Battalion to the point to the position of police officer, step one, pay rate of $1,092.30 per week.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's unanimous. Gentlemen, welcome. Welcome to the town amended and thank you for agreeing to come to work for us and serve.
Thank you. Thanks for the appointment.
Is the is the Concom agent, the new Concom agent? Present.
Quick picture, Mike.
Okay. So next on the agenda.
Mike, one more thing, just real quick. Just going on the theme with the Senior Center. When I became chief lieutenant, I spent a lot of time down there. I was down there on a regular basis with Amy and helping out and COVID really kind of put a damper that. So I'm trying to work my way back into it with Amy's schedule, but I just wanted to echo that that's that's a much needed space. I know you guys knew knew that. But I'm willing to do whatever to get on a committee, to help out, to stop moving that forward, because I think our senior population is going to keep increasing. And they do a lot of great programs down there. We don't have they don't have enough volunteers. It seems like they they need the space, they need the room, draw the people in and take care of all of us. Because I mean, I mean, few of us around here, we're not too far away from it. You know, how fast 10, 15 years goes. We're hanging down there. You and I can be playing poker down there or something. So, you know. But I'm willing to do whatever. I'll get on a committee. You know, we've already built one building. I'm sure if Chief Kessler is around too, he's built a building. So we could we could really do some good things down there and help get this moving and find out what we have to do, some creative ways of funding it. And and trying to get things going forward in the right direction. So so I just wanted to let you know, I'm willing to do whatever.
Thank you.
That's great. Thanks very much. So item six, consider appointment of Conservation Agent Maya Chuck. I know it's been a process and and this individual was interviewed and accepted a position. So we need to we need to appoint them. Do we have a motion?
I move to appoint Maya Chuck to the position of Conservation Agent at $30 per hour. Upon Conservation Agent certification, there will be a $1 increase pending successful background check and has a one-year probationary period.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. I I know there's also was also discussion with the Concom about having them taking taking over the administrative role as well. I believe that's that's been discussed and and agreed to as well. So. All right. Article seven, access for the for the Applewood subdivision. And Anne Mazur is here to talk about that and also Town Council and I believe our planner, Jack, is also here remotely. Anne? I think you're muted. Yeah, you're you're muted.
Hi.
There it is.
All right. Can you hear me now when I talk?
Yes.
Yes.
You can hear me. Okay, sorry about that. I'm on the phone and on the computer. So did you all receive that map in your packet for the Applewood access?
Can you share it, Laura?
Oh, yeah, it's in it's in the. Hold on, yes, we can.
I could share it on my screen if that was helpful.
That would be better, Anne, if you don't mind.
If you can, sure.
Um, I pushed the share screen. What am I supposed to do?
Select the screen you want to share.
All right, does that? Does that do it?
That's showing us your minimize that.
Yeah. There's the one. That's it.
So the there is an open space subdivision and in open space subdivisions, the developers can build.
We lost you verbally, Anne.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, did you so this Applewood is a subdivision. It's an open space subdivision. And so the houses were built closer together, but the developer, in order to do, has to set aside open space. And right here is a portion of the open space that they set aside. But in this subdivision, the access to the open space is through someone's yard and it's only an easement. And we've changed that in the bylaw so that won't happen again. But what we need is a permanent access that we can include in the conservation restriction to the property. And can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so fortunately, we own the Eight Morrison Drive right here. And the portion where the fire department is is labeled. And then the portion that the slipboard might sell is sort of in the south part of it. And then the part that we would like to have as access is the section, can you see my cursor?
Yes.
Yeah, right here. And that would give us access to the open space. Most of this is wetlands. And so that's why we cut around the parking lot and then would like to go straight down there. So this is a draft plan from Gary and Helen and we have the funding to do the survey, but we just need the approval from the slipboard. So is there any questions?
I just ask if Town Council has has reviewed this and has any concerns or any comments. You're muted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Cindy.
Oh, Cindy, okay.
I was following Anne's footsteps. I feel like I've.
I feel like I've been working on this project with Ann for forever, um, in different permutations of what they've had to go through. I don't, I have looked at this. I don't have any concerns or comments on this at this point. This has been long in the making.
Yes.
If there are no other questions, then I'd be looking for a motion.
If your fire chief has one.
Okay.
Ann, can you just draw the axis again? I mean, I know I was involved with this with back a while ago and I thought we were going to stay right alongside the, uh, uh, Deveney property.
Yeah. Yeah. So what we were originally going to do is like go along like this sort of. But this is all wetlands. And so it can't be built on or anything, but it would be good for open space because wetlands are important. And so working with Jack Hunter, this is, these are wetlands. And so we wanted to include that in here. But we're, we're not taking any part of the parking area or the area, um, by the fire department or the area that the town might sell.
So it's still the same plan as Jack explained to me. And I don't know if Jack saw that it goes along that Deveney property.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is the vein here. This is their lot line.
Yeah.
There's the easement access. There's that little wet area right there. Then it comes around and it follows the parking lot line. And this is, this area is all, it's a big hill, wet and full, and the wooded area. So it's pretty much the wood line.
So they are coming all the way around the parking?
Yeah, we're not on the parking at all. We're just skirting right around it.
They're not going into the park.
Not at all.
Okay. Are you, is there going to be a tree buffer between the parking area and the trail?
I think there is a tree buffer right now. You know, I think there, I think there are trees around the parking area.
Yes, and that's, I'm just, are you going to, will the trees remain right against the parking area and there'll be a trail behind trees?
Yeah, yeah, the trail would just really go from here straight out like that, you know?
I'm sorry, I was looking at you while you were talking.
Oh, sorry. Um, it'll be from that cul-de-sac and then just sort of along the edge of the property. And somehow here or there, the least wet place, we will be making a trail.
So you're not.
Probably a boardwalk.
Parking lot. So, no, so they're not.
Not in the parking lot.
So it's not like they're clearing this lot. There'll just be a trail that will go out to the, to access all of that open space. And she's coming straight. Oh, sorry. Through.
Yeah, I mean, it would start here.
Going all the way around this way? They're going right out here.
They're saying that the, the, this is the easement line is what, that's what I was saying. That's the easement line. But the trail is going to come straight out. Fine. Okay.
So, but this, I, I guess my, my question, this isn't in an easement. It's, this is open space that's given to the town. There's going to be a conservation restriction. So this is always going to be accessible, right?
Right, this will go with the open space. At this point in time, the town would own it, but if for some reason the town wanted to transfer it to someone else, that land would go with the open space. But, I mean, the intention is the town will keep it as open space. Under a conservation restriction.
All right, if there's no other questions, I just need a motion.
One second.
There were two emails. I thought we, I didn't realize it was.
What's the second email?
That's for, um, permission survey, yeah.
So, Ann, you, are you looking for us to approve the, approve the subdivision of a portion of the town-owned eight Morrison Drive for access to Applewood parcel C open space. Just going to read this motion real quick, just to make sure it's the correct one. I move to approve the subdivision of a portion of the town-owned eight Morrison Drive for access to the Applewood parcel C open space as seen on draft map and label. Access easement to parcel C.
Yeah, I guess what I would add is that this parcel, um, would be under the conservation restriction. So that probably should be added in there.
You said there was a second motion?
I thought she was, when we were speaking, when she was speaking just a moment ago, I thought she was asking for permission to survey the property.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is permission to survey the property in this, it, this way that the select board is good with it. But will, I mean, eventually the select board is going to approve the conservation restriction. So I suppose that doesn't need to be done now.
Okay, see, but that, this is what has to be put on there. So unless there was another subsequent email.
Yeah, so that sounds good.
That's my motion.
Okay.
All right, is there a second? Any other discussion? And I see that, uh, Mike Goddard has, has joined as well. So is, uh, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, unanimous. Thank you very much, Ann.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you.
Number eight, um, consider setting in-person early voting hours for the November 8th, 2022 state election. And this was submitted by the town clerk.
I move to set in-person early voting hours for November 8th, 2022 state election as those recommended by the chief elections officer. The in-person early voting hours for November 8th, 2022 state election are to be set as follows. Saturday, October 22nd, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Sunday, October 23rd, no early voting. Monday, October 24th, Thursday, through Thursday, October 27th, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Friday, October 28th, no early voting. Saturday, October 29th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Monday, October 31st, through Thursday, November 3rd, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Friday, November 4th, no early voting. And I will add that additional Sunday, if we're, which would be Sunday, October 30th, no early voting.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Now we move on to number nine, which is the, uh, the draft of the warrant for the, uh, special town meeting.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to add, add something to the, uh, the previous topic. Just wanted to add to the record that, uh, this exceeds the, uh, the state minimum requirements for early voting. Forty percent versus 25%.
Right. Thanks very much. Can, can we share the, uh, the draft warrant?
Yeah, absolutely. You know what? It's going to be easier if I just do it for me in one second.
Yeah. So as he's getting that up there, there are 32 articles on this warrant. And this is the first pass. We're just going to go through each one of them, um, have the appropriate person or persons explain, um, quickly what the article is. And then, uh, whichever department, uh, has proffered it, you know, can, can chime in to explain it. And, uh, we'll be reviewing this a few times between now and, uh, and the special town meeting in November. And the, um, finance committee will have to review all of the money articles and approve the numbers. But this is a good first, good first pass. So just to start talking about this a little bit before it gets posted, the, the special town meeting is scheduled, um, for, uh, November 14th at 7:00 PM, um, at Misco. All right, and there we are. So, so, um, article one, um, is, is for us, housekeeping to, um, to pay any unpaid bills from the previous fiscal year. And that would have to be have a, a nine-tenths vote. And again, this is just the first pass to explain what these are. Article two, um, re, re, refers to elected officials, um, that, uh, are, should be entitled to the same 2% raise that we negotiated, additional 2% raise that we negotiated, um, with the unions after the, uh, annual town meeting budget was passed. So this was, uh, specifically the, uh, the highway surveyor and the, uh, and the town clerk and may include others. But that's article two. Article three is money that we would move into stabilization, which is our, uh, our town savings account. And that number is going to be determined on, uh, the amount of free cash that gets certified. Uh, once that happens, if, if, I don't believe it's happened yet, but it should be sometime this month. Uh, we'll know that number. Article four is the same thing, uh, capital expenditure account, um, as well as article five, which is, um, uh, other post-employment benefits, um, are all based on, on free cash. And it's a number that'll be determined by us and the, uh, and the finance committee. Um, article six, um, that, that is something that's, that's done annually in conjunction with the, uh, police department for regional substance abuse outreach program. Article seven, it talks about, uh, the sale of weights and measures. Again, it's, it's really housekeeping. Article eight has to do with, um, to fund the, uh, shared fire chief salary agreement. We may be Blackstone or, or earlier, earlier this summer. Um, article nine, again, same thing with the town planner salary account. Article 10, it's a matching money for the planner. Article 11, um, this is, um, is our library director here or somebody from the, from the, uh, library trustees?
Yes.
You want to just talk, quickly talk about article 11?
Sure. This is a, a, uh, we had, uh, back in the last, uh, budgets, or excuse me, uh, during the spring for the FY23 budget cycle. Uh, we had, uh, discussed, uh, the potential for opening the library additional hours. I actually have handouts, but I didn't know. Not necessarily be here, so I can, I know, send that. We actually have, I can give you two. I have here and then I can either send. Just, so at the time, uh, we had proposed or made this same proposal, uh, in the spring. And, um, we were asked or told that perhaps it could be revisited in the fall. So, um, we're here today with the article, uh, to propose essentially, uh, opening eight additional hours, uh, at the library. It would mean funding five additional hours for library staff and five additional hours for, uh, the children's librarian. That said, it, it would seem like it would be 10 hours, but that's five additional hours for the upstairs and downstairs desk. We're actually taking that five hours and growing it to eight. But it can be open on Mondays. And Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Fridays, Saturdays. Couple of things to keep in mind that the first page, uh, is just a graph which has library attendance trends. For those who are new to the select board, uh, back in FY10, we were open 57 hours a week. There were some, uh, budgetary constraints after that and we had to cut our hours down to 30 per week. That said, uh, in the time that we've, uh, sorry, in the time that we, uh, have been in the new building, we've seen our attendance grow from FY10, uh, 10 forward. The last time the library was open 57 hours a week, it serves 32,770 people, with 3,372 patrons taking part in children's, young adult and adult programming. Shortly thereafter, library hours reduced 30 per week due to budgetary constraints. Uh, in FY2017, we relocated to the present location at 29 North Avenue. While general attendance numbers did not match FY210 due to more restrictive powers, program attendance exceeded FY210, excuse me, 2010. Uh, by FY2019, attendance did exceed FY210 with 41,977 people visiting the library and, uh, 6,987 patrons enjoying library programs. So the attendance had doubled by that point. Uh, in FY20, when the library was closed, uh, for three and a half months due to the pandemic, it still served 36,889 people, uh, so more than in FY10 with 6,203 patrons taking part in programming. What it illustrates is that community demand for library services and programs is high despite our limited hours. Uh, we're doing our level best to provide quality services and programs, but what patrons really need is increased access to the library. Uh, that access we can only do by expanding, uh, by increasing staff hours. Uh, 12 years ago, the library is open nearly double its budget hours. We sought to keep the focus on increasing library hours in nearly every budget cycle since. Sometimes the proposal is a little bit different. This is the, roughly the same proposal as, uh, we gave out in spring of this year. We've conducted surveys. As a matter of fact, right now, we're doing a, uh, a strategic plan. So we've got a strategic plan survey out there. If you haven't taken it, www.tenthelivelibrary.org. We'd love to have everybody's feedback, uh, because we're looking to, um, get feedback about the direction we're going in, the types of programs, types of services that we should be providing. And, uh, we certainly would, uh, welcome anyone's feedback.
Can you add that, uh, then, send that link over as well? If we got that rotating. Oh. Information page on the webpage. Yeah. Until the survey is done, then we'll pull it up. Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, I think Ellen, Ellen may have posted it on her town clerk Facebook page.
She did. I, I took it from that.
But, uh, and I can certainly send you the link, no problem.
Yeah, that, we can, so we can just add it to the.
Just one more, one more place for people to see it, to find it, you know?
Absolutely. We, we've, we just started about a week and a half ago. Uh, we're over 100 responses so far, but we certainly would.
Great.
Hope to have more. Yeah.
Um, so, so Andrew, just to, I, I just want to be clear. When, when we were talking about, uh, the budget during the budget season and there was a concern about, um, you know, how many hours the library had to be open to keep its accreditation? Does this, the, the, these additional hours, are they required for that purpose? Or they just additional hours to enhance things?
Total hours based on, uh, patron B, not necessarily on the number of hours we need to be open.
All right, do you have a, have you put a dollar value on it yet?
Yeah, so, um, on the.
It's in the handout, Mike.
Thanks, pal. Just hold it up to the camera so I can see it, right?
And then she can send it on to you.
All right, great.
Uh, the second page, just for those who are, uh, online, uh, shows current hours and our proposed hours. And then on the third page, it discusses, uh, the, the cost. I wasn't able to get clarification on exactly when something like this would take effect. So, uh, what I have here is increased hours cost if it were to take effect immediately after the town meeting, uh, from January forward to June 30th. And/or I can give you, uh, what the, the numbers would be for FY24. from January forward to June thirtieth, and or I can give you what the the numbers would be for F Y twenty four.
All right. Well, again, this is just, this is just the first pass. If the numbers are in there in the document, we'll take another advisement and see how it fits.
Yeah, the one thing I can tell you is for the under additional hours, I really just calculated the two, the children's librarian salary and the highest salary for a library assistant, considering we don't know exactly who will be doing the five hours, but wanted to put the maximum into the into the document. If you do need a figure for total salary for the the staff, I can certainly provide that for you.
All right. Like I said, the the document, what's what's in the handout is would be great, will be great. It's just the first pass, so we'll incorporate it and revisit it.
Andrew, it's my God, just just a question. Have you, do you have a projection of what the increased usage might look like if you were to expand the hours in terms of traffic or?
Question of what the traffic was looking like?
Well, when I hear like forty thousand, fifty thousand people, I figure that's an annual capital of people, right?
So in two thousand and nineteen, I would say that probably was our peak as far as attendance. That was at forty one thousand. I would anticipate if we're open for another eight hours per week.
I don't, based, so if I bet, this is just my guess, right? Just based upon what you're currently open. It does, I don't know that we're going to see an increase in actual traffic as we're just making it, we're giving it more accessibility by adding these hours. Now, again, there may be an increase based on if there's somebody that that can't can only get there on Mondays, then now they'll have access to that.
So yeah, so for example, one of our issues or one of the common refrains within the surveys in the past is that families can't get to the library after work. Yep. So we're open till seven, but it's clearly not late enough. Yeah. So on a couple of those days, we would be open till eight so that we could accommodate families. Certainly on Mondays, we've been closed. That's impacted. Often when people want to run errands for the week, they kind of begin on a Monday to run those errands, and we used to have a fairly sizable attendance on Mondays when we were open. And then, of course, on Saturdays, we're currently nine to noon. If we moved it forward an hour to ten, it would be nice to move that into the afternoon a little bit so we could, they could have hours after.
Do you track the programs being used as well, Andrew?
I'm sorry?
Do you track program usage? So do you understand what people are coming in for?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Is that part of the handout? Because I think the usage would be really important to understand how you'd want to set up your your hours, right? Based on the audience you're serving.
So the so the chart is broken into two pieces. It doesn't break down into individual programs, Mike. It has general attendance and then program attendance is is what's in the chart.
All right. Okay. All right. I'll take a look. Thank you.
Okay. And obviously, if there's, you know, something you're looking for with greater specificity, I can certainly provide that for you.
So I just want to comment that I appreciate you coming, you know, with with data that shows a need. It makes it a lot easier to argue for. In terms of greater specificity, it might be interesting to see the breakdown between adult and children's programming, charts of program attendance.
Yeah, absolutely. We could definitely do that. Yeah, the one year there that F Y twenty 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 one only accounts for, I believe it was seven or eight weeks of the year because we were closed otherwise. So and it doesn't really account for all of the the curbside service we provided because we were still doing that throughout the year, curbside service, as well as providing like take inmates for families or crafts and those sorts of things when people were stuck in the, so yeah. Doesn't quite quantify it in that regard. We were, we were there and functioning and trying to help serve the the community.
Myself and my family appreciated that.
All right. Thank you very much. Article twelve. I guess piggybacking off of what the the folks from the senior center and actually the the police chief talked about, Article twelve is actually a placeholder article to talk about available funds for expansion of the senior center. And I know there was a presentation that was done certainly early in the spring or maybe even last year before the election with with plans for an expansion, and we all know that it just isn't big enough. So again, we'll be looking at that. Thirteen is for us to actually rename the money from the three hundred and fiftieth celebration account so that will, the next time we do the Rock the Block, we'll actually have access to that money.
Quick note on that. I I think that we should call it Mendon Fest. This was actually a recommendation from Dan. It was a, this was something called Mendon Fest before, and if we, I think if we generalize it to Mendon Fest, and then we can say, you know, Mendon Fest presents Rock the Block or
Yeah.
the other
This is an easy one. We just have to get, it doesn't cost us any any more money. You just have to get the language right, and whatever we call it, that's what we need. That's what we're stuck with, right? So that's, that's an easy one. Okay, fourteen, for the for the backside of the the main floor of the town hall. You know, there's the the elevator and then the alcove with some stairs which needs to be redesigned. We're talking about putting out the bid. So that's that. Article fifteen, to put it, explain it simply, about a hundred years ago, the town took a small piece of landlocked property for non-payment of taxes. And, you know, obviously, it's under the control of the select board, but we're just talking about potentially selling that to the to the person who owns the land all around it, and it's being looked into right now. Okay, sixteen, this is, this is for a facility in the Parks Department to actually potentially have a place for them to put lawn mowers and and other equipment. They don't really have a have a place right now. And Article seventeen, if the highway surveyor is here to talk about road machinery.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, so Article seventeen is to put back, we had to buy an pressure washer to wash the trucks. I mean, just beyond repair. They don't last forever. So that's what that is for. Article eighteen. This money is to repair the front end of one of our big trucks. It needed a whole whole front end rebuild. We had to pull the pull the I V mount with new kingpins in, new bushings. That is for that. Article nineteen. The twenty thousand dollars going into the highway construction and maintenance is to this is something that we normally would do if we had seasoned or experienced help. I had to, I had to sub this work out because we just, we did not have seasoned or experienced help this year with the with the new hires that we had, and that's what that is. Then Article twenty is the furnace down at the highway department meeting is just it's just, it doesn't work anymore. It was going to cost almost five thousand dollars to repair what was there, and it would still be junk. So I got a, I got C clothes to replace the furnace. That's that. And then Article twenty one, that is, we have two young people that we hired down at the highway department that don't have C D Ls. And that is five thousand each to get them their C D Ls so that we have people to drive the trucks in the winter to sand the roads.
And Alan, just for people who don't know what the C D L is, that's a commercial driver's license, right?
Right. And what happened with that is the the federal government changed the law in on February eighth of this year, I believe was the date. They said that you can no longer train your employees with your own equipment and take the test with it. They have to go to a federally certified driving school. So that, I mean, there were a lot of towns in the same boat. There's the, the C D L school is very, very small right now, but they're in dire need. So that, in order for us to, again, right now, I have three people that have C D L licenses down at the highway department, have five total employees. So if they don't get their C D L licenses, I will only have on the road four Sanders where we would normally have six. With six Sanders, the response time to salt the roads in the winter before school or before work or any of that is like two and a half hours. So if we do not have the C D L drivers to to drive these trucks, we'll be down to four, and it's going to increase our response time dramatically.
Not only response time, it's going to increase
Accidents, it's going to
Well, it's going to increase the fact that you can't, the roads are going to be covered again in snow. So you'd have, your upkeep is going to diminish.
And it's going to be, it'll be a lot harder with the, on the employees because they'll have to work that that many more hours. And as it is in the wintertime now, it's, it's, I can honestly tell you it's not fun. You know, everybody says, oh, yeah, they make overtime. It's blood money. It's, this will be my last winter, and I gotta tell you what, I'm excited to be done.
Okay, so twenty two is stormwater management?
Yes, that is that's the original amount I put in at the beginning of the of this fiscal year. I'm just trying to get the ex, I'm just trying to get done what what needs to be done with that stormwater management.
So this is the money that you asked for that was not put in the initial budget in May, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're asking for the same thing you asked for then, and we said we would do it in the fall once we get free cash certified, and that's what we're doing now, right? So, all right, thank you very much, Alan. Twenty twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, and twenty six are the four Community Preservation Act articles. The four buckets, so to speak, of of money that we put aside every year from that money is, and Mazer, I don't know if you're still on or not, but did you get any information about?
I am on, but I think there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I I am on, but I think there is someone from the Historical Society that can go through some of these articles.
Okay, I just wanted to ask if 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 you can just refresh us about the money, the matching money that we had received, if we had had that information, that's all.
You mean from the state?
Yes.
I would have to look that up, but it was a good amount this year.
Yeah. Okay, like I said, this is just the first pass.
Yeah. Lynn, are you on?
Yeah, I am. And Dan is too.
Great.
Dan, do you want to take the first one, twenty three?
Yeah, just somebody tell me what it is because I'm driving.
Okay, this was
This is the one about the TAF library and the ADA upgrades.
Yeah, so I mean, they're both kind of the same thing. We're looking for some funding to start the process to do the design work on a potential reuse on the upper, like the main floor of the former library. It's a historic building. Right now, it's just kind of become this junk depository. But because of all the restrictions, it really, we we need to engage a historic consultant to figure out what can be done, what it would look like, and ultimately write the bids and come back for the money to fund it.
This is all CPA money that you want to use to do this, right?
Right. So we could use CPA administrative funds, but because this is a bigger timeline, it made more sense to pull these monies at town meeting and save the administrative funds for something that's much more last minute.
Okay.
So this is, it's basically engineering.
All right. Article twenty four, it talks about the town hall.
Is the windows.
That's, yep, so same thing. The windows that are there are junk. They're at the end of their life. They can't be opened. They got holes in the screens. So we'd like to figure out what it would take to restore the original historic windows of that building. Again, because of the preservation restriction involved, we have to do everything right. We go through the state. So this is the engineering to do the research on that so we can come back with a proposal for the actual windows.
Okay, Article twenty five talks about preservation of historic records.
These are, I believe, some old textbooks that were discovered by the society, turned over to the town clerk because they belong in the town's records. They need to be conserved. I think there's some issues with them. So this is funding to do that. I think it's going to be five, ten thousand. Ellen was going to get pricing, but I don't know if she was able to do that yet.
All right. Like I said, this is just the first pass. Okay, now twenty six talks about upgrades to Memorial Park tennis courts, the Clough School basketball courts, and doing some pickleball courts and and portable pickleball nets. Now, this, this is separate from the from the proposal for the beach, right?
Yes, this is a, this is a totally new project. It's basically, basically what we're looking to do, there's been a lot of requests for pickleball. It seems to be a new up and coming sport. So this would be to re, basically repaint the tennis court at Memorial Park to add to pickleball lines. You'll still still be a tennis court. It'll just be dual function. And additionally, there's a kind of a weird like miniature basketball court behind the Clough School. So this would repaint that surface so it could also be used and purchase some portable nets. That's a fairly underutilized facility, so that would be a really good spot to try and host tournaments or do activities over there.
And and you have estimated that total at twenty four thousand nine hundred? Does that sound right?
Yeah, so that's the one price we've got so far. We are going to have to go out and get formal pricing. I just, I got some information from the company that did the work before. I'm hoping that'll come down a little because it's awfully pricey, but
Thank, thanks for doing that. So, all right, Article twenty seven.
Mike?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I do have, I do have the dollar amount that the Mendon is going to be getting from the state to the CPA program. And they'll be receiving three hundred and thirty five thousand four hundred and eleven dollars, so a really nice chunk of money.
Yeah, significant. It's significant. Thanks for looking that up, Ann. I'm glad you had it at your fingertips like that.
Yeah.
So Article twenty seven, I don't know if if Lynn, do you, do you want to talk about this? Lonnie, you you may want to chime in in this, too. Are these the two new historic districts that were proposed that we passed over in May?
Yes.
Can you talk about that a little bit?
I can too, if you want.
Oh, you, okay, Lonnie, if you want to take it, go.
Dan, this was
I think it's Dan, yeah.
So this is, Article twenty seven is a repeat of what we attempted at the annual town meeting. It's proposing two new historic districts, the lower half of Washington Street, as well as a single homestead, six Bates. Unfortunately, last time there was an issue, we missed some statutory timelines for filing things with the planning board, so it was passed over. So we're trying again. This time it was submitted to the planning board. We still have to hold another hearing. The date that we send that out to you all. So basically, this is a redo of that.
Dan, just a question. Is it a single article for both districts? Or are there two articles, one for each district?
It's written as a four parter, so it's, I guess it's one article for both. Receive the study report, create the two new districts, amend the bylaws with the maps. That's, I think we've submitted to the state.
I think is, I don't know if somebody's talking and it's not getting picked up or
Mike, can you hear me?
I can now.
Yeah, and I just, I just say, the first time we did the the historic districts, we actually broke them into two articles. This, rather than it, rather than all or nothing, I don't know if that's still an opportunity.
Cindy, if you have a
Yeah.
My, my suggestion would be
My, my suggestion would be put it all in one article. You can always have two separate motions for each part. Just because it's easier. It's not uncommon to have compound articles and then break out the motions. That's just my personal preference, but you can do it either way.
But so you're suggesting that even though there's one article, you would have multiple votes on that article, some for each section.
You could, you would have two motions under that article. You could, if you decided you wanted to separate them out. You could do a ma, a main motion that has both. You could do. A motion that was for the first district and then one was for the second district. You don't have to decide that at the moment. You could decide it, I should go down the road and what prevailing thoughts are on the subject. But it just seems to me it's just cleaner and easier when you keep similar topics under one article. It's done that way in a lot of different municipalities, but it's, it's a preference. You don't have to do it in one.
So I guess the quick question is, the way this is worded right now. We could actually do this the way Mike Goddard's suggestion, if, if it was decided to be the way. To do it in, in multiple sections, even though we've got this, as long as we've got article twenty-seven here, we can wordsmith this. To, to do this in two separate motions if we wanted to do that. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think what I'm sort of saying is you kind of collapse twenty-seven and twenty-eight so that it's one article covering all of those options. And just like Mike said, if you want to have separate votes on the motion, but that way you, you synthesize.
Well.
Consolidate the discussion and the topic.
Well, I think there, I, I think it's two different things because twenty-seven talks about a historic district. And then new historic districts, right? And then twenty-eight. It talks about exempting pools and play structures.
I apologize, I misread it.
Yeah.
I read it right the first time this afternoon.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if I could just say one thing here, Mike.
Absolutely.
We do have there. The two, we can actually incorporate both in one article from what we were told. The, the next, the article about the pools. Is actually an amendment to the report that we're actually submitting. We had a hearing. A, a week or so ago, and there was something in the original draft or in the original document. And in order, obviously, to change that, as it's a bylaw, we have to have that as a separate item completely from what the district that was, that we're going to be establishing.
I agree. I was reading the two articles incorrectly when I spoke.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, well, and then the, these last four articles, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one and thirty-two is to accept. Different streets as public ways within the town. So that's pretty straightforward. So that's it for a first pass at the. Of the warrant. So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Wait a second.
Yep.
All right, everybody. Thank you very much. We'll see you in a week.
Bye-bye.
Have a good night.
Hold on, what's that?
Oh, sorry.
Can we set a meeting date for October twelfth? Does that work for everybody?
You mean, you mean for.
It would be our next, our next scheduled Wednesday, that's all.
Let's see, so we've got one scheduled for the twenty-eighth?
Which would be regular. This one's out of order because we moved it.
Right, right. So we're going to, right, so we're going to skip the fifth and the next one would be the twelfth. Yeah, I was going to talk about it next week, but.
Okay.
Is that, is that okay with everybody else? I, I just was going to.
Yeah, works for me.
All right, well, let's put a, we'll at least put a placeholder in and then we'll just confirm it next week if that's okay with everybody.
Thank you.
All right, all right, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks, everybody.